Good morning, everyone. Like to call this regular meeting for October tenth, twenty twenty-four to order. If you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeus symbol of preferred friendship among the American cultures.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is approval of regular meeting agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll go ahead and second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by myself. Do we have any discussion? Just for information, we have commissioners on Zooms. Okay, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to public input. Okay, during this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on the agenda, and the forms are in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Well, I'm Upecano. I am a resident of Lisa Edwards District. I'm here because I have some concerns about Heather Regional. I'm bringing them to you because the last time I had some concerns, I brought them to your board president, who then informed me that he doesn't like to go out in public because he doesn't like to hear public concerns. So I feel like it's important that I address this with you. My mother had an injury last week, so we had to go to the emergency room. And the experience was far less than stellar. When we first got there, we went into the registration, she went into the registration area, and I stayed in the waiting room. And the registration person does not close the door. So I heard her personal information, I heard her social security number. I heard the social security numbers of the next four patients who came in as well, because they don't close that door. That wasn't even the tip of the iceberg, though. We went through triage, which was fine. The nurse was great. Everything was fine. They did let us know that the emergency room was full of patients at that point. And so it would be a wait, which was not a problem for us. Then the nurse said that the doctor would come out and see us in the waiting room. Okay, I thought she was kidding. She was not. We sat in the waiting room for about two hours before radiology came to get my mom to do her x-rays. Radiology was the bright spot. The radiologist and her assistant were very, very concerned with privacy. They didn't talk to her at all about what they were going to do before they took her back to the room. They made sure no one else was hearing what they were going to do with her. About an hour later, we had seen four patients leave. There were other patients in the waiting room also waiting. No one went back. The three patients were still in the waiting room waiting. At that time, a, I believe it was an assistant, not a nurse, I'm not sure, came out to speak to another patient who was waiting to let her know that her blood work was irregular in some way, would have to be done again. So that lady happens to be someone that I knew, one of my former teachers. This is a small community. We all know each other. I did not need to know that she had irregular blood work. Neither did anyone else in the room. So then, about an hour later, the nurse practitioner, it wasn't even the doctor, came out. And we thought he was going to bring my mother back in to discuss her condition. But no, he told her to stay seated there in the waiting room and discuss what her issues were. Luckily, it was an injured shoulder. It wasn't a big deal. But had it been something a little more personal, and an entire room of people had heard it, that were strangers, that would have been terrible. As soon as he was done with us, he went to the other patient that was waiting across the room. Across the room, but I can still hear him, and talked about his condition. This was a minor who was being treated in the waiting room. You know, you go to the emergency room and you sign a paper that says that they consider him an important part of the procedure. However, that's not being done right now. I don't know whose bright idea it was to let people treat, doctors treat patients in the waiting room. But that seems to me to be something that's probably illegal and could probably lead to a lawsuit at some point. So I'm hoping that someone will have the sense to stop that procedure, because it is not working. My concern is this. If you're going to build a shiny new hospital, that's great. People will love that. But if people know that if they go there, everyone in town's going to know their business, they're probably still not going to go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Come on up, sir.
Hi, my name is Lamar Gerhardt. I was here in the last month regarding peacocks. I have a bunch of them, gila, that are invading my property, pooping feathers. So I went down the rabbit hole, and I got a copy of your animal control regulations and what you stipulate. So I talked to the livestock board, to Sean Davis, who's the deputy director. Peacocks are not livestock, and he will inform his inspectors that they are not. There's one in here about exotics. They are to be sent to the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish. I talked to them. It is not under their purview. So what it comes down to, I have a tape of their message. It's either animal control or sheriff. It's basically a nuisance. They're not rock stars. They're a domestic bird. They're a fowl. All birds are fowls. So where I'm at now is, I think what I do is just call the sheriff for a basic nuisance. But I need a backup on this from you folks, I guess. I could call our sheriff, I think is Don Gatlin. So I also got paperwork if I need to talk more to you in private, special meeting, I can do that. But what I'm trying to do is set a precedent to change the law in the future, because this woman wants to raise twenty-three of them for feathers, for ornament. And the reason they're not livestock, there's no eggs, they're not meat, they're just they're just for ornamentation and feathers. So I'm going to keep proceeding with this, and I will call Don and have them regard it as a nuisance and need to be fenced in, just like a dog or a cat, but according to your regulations. All Jason can deal with is dogs, cats, and domestic birds. So either we change this and include peacocks, or it just goes to the sheriff. So I'm kind of at an ambiguous point in time right now. But it's not just a nuisance, it's a health hazard when you've got twelve, fifteen of them in your backyard doing what they do. So anyway, thank you for your time, and Mr. Billings is my district commissioner. I'll probably talk to him at some point if I could. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item would be proclamations, consideration of proclamation. Fifteenth anniversary of the Western New Mexico University Remembrance March Walk for Heroes. And to read it and present it, it's going to be our deputy county assessor, Mr. Raoul Turieta.
Good morning, county commissioners, chairman of the board, elected officials. And it gives me great pleasure to talk about the Walk for the Heroes and do the proclamation. I can't believe it's been fifteen years that this has been going on. And it's quite interesting, because when it first started, we actually started walking at about eleven o'clock at night. And I know my tocayo here, our sheriff, Raúl Villanueva, even Patrick, would actually attend and walk in the middle of the night all the way to the demin of thirty-six point six miles. And I guess we've bounced around, changed a little bit. It was a little bit of a hazard. But thank you, Raúl, for, you know, being there all the time, and for our safety and our security and so on. So thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to read this proclamation of Western New Mexico University, the Remembrance March. Walk for the Heroes Proclamation. Whereas the Western New Mexico University Remembrance March Walk for the Heroes will be honored for fallen veterans of the branch of the United States Armed Forces. Armed Forces. Most of the Grand County of New Mexico residents resides, and it's going to be on October nineteen, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the Walk commemorates the Americans who have served in the Armed Forces, Army, Marine Corps, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, and also the Marine Corps, Navy, Air Force, and Reserves. Whereas Western New Mexico University Remembrance March Walk for the Heroes offline registration, where you can actually register for this wonderful event. Whereas the Walk for the Heroes participates, of Walk for the Heroes starts at ten a.m. on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and expects to march around Fort Beard's historical landmarks and also the Veteran National Cemetery, returning at noon for the Fort Beard Baton Memorial Park parking lot. Whereas we will be honoring the veterans, flags presenting will start at one p.m. As long as Americans live under the blanket of freedom, who provides the memory will never dishonor and will never be forgotten. Whereas the Remembrance March, whereas the Western New Mexico University Remembrance March Walk for the Heroes is a great public outreach for the United States Armed Forces, radials, and their families. Serviced men, women will be remembered for the Grand County, New Mexico. Should this be the day of the month of declaring of Western New Mexico University Remembrance March, Walk for the Heroes Appreciation Day. Now thereof, the result of Grand County Board of County Commission, the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four declares Western New Mexico University Remembrance March Walk for the Heroes of Appreciation Day. We really appreciate that county commission about the proclamation for Walk for the Heroes. Please join us. It's a wonderful event. We've been doing it for the last fifteen years. A lot of camaraderie whenever we do these walks. If you want to support any of the fallen veterans, please show up. A lot of them do take photographs as we do the march. Matter of fact, it's a short march compared to the thirty-six point six miles. And it's a lot of fun, and there will be food, there'll be entertainment. So please join us on October nineteenth this year at the Fort Beard Baton Park, if you would please. Any questions there, senor?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. So go ahead and make a motion to approve the fifteenth anniversary WNMU Remembrance March Walk for the Heroes.
Second.
So motion, and second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion, commissioners? Okay, see none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to presentations, we have a presentation on proposed new wireless tower. Ms. Kim Wood, site acquisition and zoning specialist. Oh, okay. Hold on. Sorry. Yeah, come on.
Thank you very much.
Apologize for that. Sorry. Okay, now moving on to presentations, Ms. Woods.
Good morning. I'm here to present for Tower Co., who is the tower builder of a proposed hundred-foot monopine that will hold several carriers on this particular property. Tower Co. is proposing to build a multi-carrier one-hundred-foot monopine at sixteen Red Cliff Trail in member's New Mexico. That zip code is eight-eight-zero-four-nine in Grant County, which is off of Highway thirty-five. The objective of this project is to provide wireless data and voice services to residents, travelers, and first responders in a remote area of New Mexico. The proposed tower will be available to three carriers with Verizon Wireless proposed as the first carrier at ninety-six feet. The equipment compound is proposed to be fifty by fifty with a six-foot fence surrounded by a four-foot cattle fence out of seventy foot by seventy foot. This will house Verizon Wireless equipment and future carriers. The Verizon Wireless equipment area is proposed to be at eighteen by twenty-eight or five hundred and four square feet, which includes a concrete pad to house the Verizon Wireless equipment. Verizon Wireless has future plans to add an emergency backup generator in case of power outages in the area in the future. And the equipment pad will hold the future emergency backup generator. Please note that this area currently does not have any wireless service. This is what the proposed tower will look like. And actually, this looks like we're proposing four carriers. So this will actually propose four carriers on this monopine. And then you can see the equipment area below that's proposed. And then this is what the equipment compound will look like as well, with Verizon Wireless as the first carrier. And that equipment compound is right next to the proposed tower. So here we have propagation maps that show previous coverage without this site for Verizon Wireless. And then this shows the coverage map, propagation maps is what they call them, with the proposed site. So this shows significant coverage in that area with that site. In conclusion, this is a much-needed area for wireless service for the sake of the residents and for first responders' medical needs and safety. The area currently does not have wireless service, and this would serve the needs of the local residents, whether they have a medical emergency or in the case of a traffic accident. Tower Co. has met all of the Grant County requirements with conditions to approve the proposed tower. Tower Co. has also used the least intrusive areas of concealment. So the tower, the antennas are concealed on the tower with the pine fronds. Wireless Tower Solutions, Dean Williamson, has recommended approval of this proposal. And I welcome any questions or concerns regarding this proposal.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Yeah, can you tell who owns the property?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but I can give that to you shortly.
So it's a private owner that you're leasing from? Okay.
It's a couple that owns it.
Okay, thank you. That doesn't matter. I don't need their names. I just wondered what the ownership was. Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I don't really have any sense of how far off the road the tower is going to be, but I know there are ways to, you know, conceal the aesthetic of these towers. And it's clearly in a, you know, in an area, forested area. Is there going to be any effort to conceal the tower? Or is that even necessary? So I don't have a visual on it, so I don't even know if that's necessary, I guess.
We are proposing it as a monopine with the antennas within the fronds of the monopine. So that would be a stealth wireless communications facility.
Our picture looks like a giant Christmas tree. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Billings.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is going to be a presentation for the fiscal year twenty-three financial audit.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Hi, AJ. Am I sure, are you all able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Next one. I'm going to share my experience here. And I know that your IT was making an adjustment to see if we're able to do that. Are you able to see our presentation?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Next one. I know you all should have a copy as well, but I just please wanted to make sure that you had that you had, that we were able to go over it. So as with the money, AJ, I'm a partner with Carver and Ingram, who assumed the audit for Grant County for twenty twenty-three. We'll take the next few minutes. We'll walk through this presentation, just kind of basically getting a recap of the audit. If you've got questions, please let me know as we go through it. But that's kind of what we'll cover. So what we'll cover today is just kind of the scope of the work itself, the responsibility, I believe it's both the auditor as well as the auditive, our management's responsibilities, the reports, and what that document looks like. And to kind of navigate through that just a little bit, and if there's any questions, go ahead and say, you know, let me know. From the scope of work, so what did we audit? What was the point? Obviously, for June thirty, twenty twenty-three, so this is last year's audit, right? So this is the presentation of the audit, the financial statements for June thirty, twenty twenty-three. And so we were engaged in order to render an opinion upon those financial statements, which is that here, there. Secondarily, we also, who also conducted a single audit. So as Grant County spent over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards, we ultimately conducted a single audit. So we audited based on risk assessment and requirement of the uniform guidance. There were two programs that we tested and rendered opinion on these programs. One, the COVID-nineteen virus physical recovery fund. And the second is a formula grant for rural areas of the tribal transit program. So those two programs themselves, we audit, we'll talk about that again if we get some opinions. But we did conduct audits related to those two programs and rendered opinions upon the compliance with those programs. And then lastly, as the audit is conducted in the state of New Mexico, we do test for compliance with particular state audit rule-type items. Now, we don't render an opinion upon compliance with those items, but just travel or procurement. And we do have to test those report anything beyond two. As part of the audit itself, I'd like to remind everyone as it relates to the responsibility. So what are we doing in the auditor? So if the auditor were forming and expressing an opinion as it relates to the financial statements in the fair presentation recorded with the United States, that is auditing principles, so yeah, right? So we're looking at the financial statements. Are they fairly presented at the end, you know, for that time period and at the end of the year? So it's a reasonable, it's not an absolute assurance. So what that means is we don't test every transaction. We don't test down to the penny. We test to determine anything that we wouldn't catch that would be not considered significant to the user of those financial statements, be that of bonding folks, the public, the state, whatever that looks like. So again, it's a reasonable, it's not an absolute assurance. Otherwise, we'd never leave, right? We can't, we can't do that. We consider the internal controls for the purposes of designing our audit procedures. We do not render an opinion on internal controls. So we'll talk about that when we go through that report here in a moment. But kind of a high-level perspective is that we do look at internal controls. We have to understand the controls as it relates to Grant County and the transactions and the balances that come from those controls. But we don't render an opinion to say whether they're effective or operating effectively or anything else. And when I get down to the last part, where we communicate all significant matters to you. So we do that as a way of finding, we do that as a way of reports that we provide, the exit conference, entrance conference, et cetera. But anything that we find throughout our audit, we do give to you in the report itself, okay? So we're communicating all those matters to you. Management's responsibilities, of course, the financial statements are yours, okay? We do prepare them and service, we do audit them, but they are your financial statements. And so management, of course, the oversight, the oversight body, is going to establish and maintain internal controls. And so that's also including monitors, review, oversight, everything. The audit is not really a part of that internal process. We are an external process. But of course, ongoing review, things like that. The accounting principles are yours. Now, we will help with anything that comes along in relation to the GADBI requirements, et cetera. But you're the one who selects all of the accounting principles and policies to make sure that they're implemented appropriately. Same thing with the financial statements in the fair presentation of those financials, to make sure that they're compliant with all necessary items. With the GADBI requirements, yeah, we do again, prepare them and service that they are from your information. Lastly, before we jump into the reports themselves, is of course the maintenance and complete and accurate accounting information. So we take the information, review, we test transactions, we test balances based on risk, et cetera. And that's what feeds into those financial statements. So of course, the records are yours. Same thing with the programs and controls that we've talked about to prevent and detect fraud, okay? So you design controls, you're going to want to consider fraud, and how do you prevent or detect those? That is, of course, the commission that's participating in the process, conference, exit conference, and the board presentation. You also received at the beginning of the audit, there was the engagement letter, there was the knowledge by the board, as well as at the end, you received the financial statement and required communication, which kind of has all of that communication as well. So I'm going to jump into the reports. This slide here is just showing that there's two things that we've sent. We're going to cover the financial statements and stuff, all the information that was in there, okay? So that's the one on the left. That's about a two-hundred-and-thirty-page financial statement, have all the information in there. The report that's on the right is the required communication that goes to the county commission. It all gets sent down with the financial statements, so that is, it's a report from us to you that gives a whole bunch of different pieces, whether it's the journal entries, whether it's the policies and procedures, the findings. It'll give our required pieces that we have to look at in our response, okay? So all of that kind of information's in there with accordance with all the standards. So I'm not going to cover that. We will cover the financial statements. So from the financial statement, we can kind of give you a layout of where the reports are, just the findings, highlights, and then you'll kind of move into where those pieces, and then kind of geography of where those items are. The reports themselves, so the main report that we look at is the independent audit report. It's in pages eight through eleven of that two-hundred-and-forty-page document, okay? Whatever the page number is. That's the report on the financial statements themselves. That's an unmodified opinion. So that's the best opinion that's available. What that means is that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with all applicable rules and regulations, all in GAAP, right? And there's no areas where we couldn't obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence in order to render an opinion. So that's a good job. What that means is that we tested the transactions, the balances, those significant areas. We're able to obtain sufficient evidence to support the balance of these transactions. I'm going to use two terms here. We look at both hard numbers and soft numbers. That's the way I term them. Hard number is something tangible, right? I can go to the bank, and I can confirm through a bank statement and bank how much cash you have. So that's a hard number, because it's something that we know this document is tied to. From a soft number piece, that would be like an estimate, right? An allowance or receivable that you're not going to collect, your depreciation expense, your pension expense, those types of things, an estimate. And so we have to look at all of these procedures, et cetera, that go around those to be able to support that. So we're able to support all of those different areas. I will mention a couple of things in here. We do not conduct the audit of the Hila Medical, the Hila Regional Medical Center, but we do have to include their findings and the financials in the financial statements in a couple of areas in accordance with the GADBI requirements. And so we include a reference in the report to their auditors, which was an unmodified opinion on that. But it's just important that you know that. So to recap, clean opinion, okay? Best opinion available as it relates to the financial statements, an unmodified opinion on the financials themselves. The second report in the financial statements, all the way back from pages 194 and 195. This is what I would call the Yellow Book or government auditing standards report. And what this is, basically the report and the internal controls, anything that we find within the money. Like I told you, we don't render an opinion on controls. We do report on them. It's what we call the negative assurance report. What that means is here's items we found, others made this, but we didn't identify. Okay, and it lists all the findings in there. There's about five different levels of findings that would be reported in there. Under government auditing standards, Yellow Book, whatever we want to call it, you've got three levels of findings. You have material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and material noncompliance. What that is, the definition is a material weakness at the highest level. So this is a big deal. If something goes wrong here, it could affect the user's opinion of the financial statements if this isn't prevented or detected in the next year. The next level down is a significant deficiency. The definition is doesn't rise to the level of material, yet still merits attention to government bodies. It might be policy, name, procedure. It might be resources, it might just be informational, but you might have to have some sort of input in that. And the next one is material noncompliance. So if you don't comply with a grant, a debt covenant, something in a material fashion to affect that funding or affect the grant, it gets reported there. In the state of New Mexico, we have to report everything we find to those two other layers, the levels of findings that are reported in there. And that's other matters and other noncompliance. So other matters, let's say you overexpend a PO. Okay, well, it's not material, it's not significant, but it might have been a one-off. Those other matters would be in there. Or if you don't comply with, say, travel premium for a budgetary item that's not material, it could be other noncompliant items. So that's what you're reporting. There are 11 findings that would be reported as it relates to material weakness, significant deficiencies, and two material noncompliance. And there are 10 that fall into those other matters items. Okay, so seven material weaknesses, two significant deficiencies. Those two significant deficiencies are for the component units, so we're not going to cover those. We didn't do those. They just have to be reported in financial. And then there's two material noncompliance in that report. And then there's 10 state auditable findings. Two of those are other matters, eight of them are other noncompliance, three of which are as a component unit. Again, that's the component parts. The report is on pages 194 and 195. And then the findings, what happened, the criteria that was violated, the cause, the effect, the recommendations, as well as the county's responsive findings. All of that information in detail is on page 209, 241 of the financial statement, of that document itself, with all that information. We covered in detail the exit conference as well. But we'll go over the highlights of what they are, like the titles, what the levels are, where to find them. So you can go through them on your own. The last report, as I had mentioned, we do a single audit. Okay, so this is basically a report of compliance with the major programs and any sort of internal control over compliance as reported and required by the uniform guidance. So we test two programs, COVID-19 and the formula grant. So we'll start with COVID-19. That's an unmodified opinion. What that means is that you complied in all material respects as it relates to the compliance for that program. Okay, so we have to consider all of the direct and material compliance requirements, whether it's allowable costs, whether it's cash management, equipment management, reporting, et cetera. We have to consider those items to determine, did you comply? And we did note that there was compliance within that program. There was a material weakness over compliance. There was a significant efficiency control over compliance to report on, which will again, note here at home. With the formula grant, excuse me, with the formula grant, that was a qualified opinion. So there was one compliance requirement, I believe, I have to double check. I didn't write it down. Sorry, I'll find you if you get to the report. But there was one compliance requirement, okay, it was property that did not have compliance with that grant. You complied with all other direct material compliance requirements, with the exception of that one that was noted in the formula grant. As part of that, that grant, we had five findings. One was a significant deficiency, four material weaknesses over internal controls. Two of those also led to the material noncompliance, which led to the qualified opinion. That report on pages 198 to 201. And the findings, all of the details as it relates to those specific findings are pages 217 of the, 228 of the financial statements. So before I jump into each of the findings summaries, just, you know, or the findings summary itself, just to kind of give you a heads up of where things are, what the level of finding was, the title themselves, what they kind of mean. To recap, unmodified opinion on the financial statements, unmodified opinion on the coronavirus, modification of the opinion on the formula grant. And then everything else is reported within that financial statement. So as we jump into where the findings are, okay? So the financial statement findings will start. The way I like to determine, you'll see headers in there when you look at the financials. This way you have an understanding, I just put the summaries in here. It'll show the pages where all of that information is, with all that detail. But the findings themselves, when I say FS, I mean financial statements that's reportable because of the financial statement control, not federal control or not because of the state of New Mexico, but with the law under, reporting requirements under government auditing standards. The number itself, 2023-001, that's the year and the number of the findings. When you see it in parentheses, of the prior year, 2022-001, that means it's a repeat finding from last year. Okay, most of these are not repeats, but this one was, so I'd like to let you know. We have to keep that original finding number in there as, in accordance with Yellow Book, so that you know where they're at. And then at the end of the finding, I put MW or SD or whatever that is, just to give you a little bit of material weakness without all being described in that finding. So kind of quickly here, the first three on this page, they're all financial statement findings, findings one, two, and three. They're all material weakness findings as it relates to the financial statements. The first one, controls over cash balances. Second, inaccurate schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And then the third is the financial reporting with the governmental funds and proprietary funds. All the details are within the findings on the statements. Okay? The second page here, again, they're all material weaknesses, all related to the financial statements, findings four, five, and six, control over journal entries, inaccurate rules, and control over the capital act. Okay, so those are pages 13 to 14 to 15. And the next page is the last financial statement finding that's related to the county. And that was a material weakness over some prepaid access. These next couple of findings here go into the federal side. Okay, so I wanted to also put in there where that program, what program affected and what those policies or whatever they are against. Page numbers, it'll tell you what, thank you, Paul, right? Federal finding, finding number, what happened, the title of it, significant efficiency, and which program they are. The first one is the policies and procedures. That was a significant efficiency, so it's not material. And that's over both, the COVID-19 as well as the formula grant program. So both programs were affected by that. So the details is 17, on 217, 218. The next one down, the federal finding, that is related to COVID-19. And that's procurement, small purchase, and the suspension requirement. That's a material weakness over control, but this was not a material noncompliance. We noted a weakness in control, but we did not note any noncompliance as it relates to that, that issue, okay? This next page here, you also have procurement, small purchase, suspension requirement for the formula grant, which is a material weakness. This one here was not a material noncompliant item, but again, a weakness in control. The next one, cash management control as it relates to the formula grant. Okay, again, this one here was a weakness in control, but not a material noncompliant piece as described on pages 223, 224. This one here, the equipment and real property management, this one was a material weakness and material noncompliant. This is what drives, where there was noncompliance noted as it related to this grant, which drove the qualified opinion. And that's on pages 225 to 226. And then the last federal finding here is also related to the formula grant, which was allowable costs related to the compensation. And that was material weakness and material noncompliant, again, leading to that qualification. All the details, 227 to 228. Then the last ones here are all state auditable items. So they don't rise to the level of needing more attention, but they're important. They're things that we let you know. Some of them are related to the same type of things, but this way that you've got an understanding, full comprehensive look as it relates to the audit account as a whole. That finding number 14, data collection form submission. So obviously, the audit late, the data selection form is late. So that's what's the reason for that, having other noncompliance. Cash appropriations, that's a budgetary compliance item that's described on page 230. Budgetary conditions and fund deficits, that's also compliance items related to the budget. That's on pages 231 and 232. Travel premium, I had mentioned something along, you know, that's another noncompliant type item. So there was some noncompliance noted related to travel premium act, that's on page 233. Budget adjustment, that's other matters, it's a process and controls related to the budget adjustment. That's described in page 234. Conflict in interest policy, that's a control item, another matter that we noted on page 235. The late audit itself, right? So obviously, it's late, so that's a noncompliant piece that's on page 235. So that kind of concludes the findings that are related to the county. And then just because I want to be fully transparent, the other findings that are listed in there, they are the CU, that means the county. Those are the ones that the auditor of Hila Regional Medical Center has had. And then we have to report those as part of the reporting unit themselves. So we can just take those straight from them. But there's a significant efficiency related to the financial reporting, significant efficiency for the preparation of their CIPA, accounting and control of the capital assets was another noncompliance that they noted. Budgetary excess, that was another noncompliance that was noted. And then also the state audit rule finding, I believe that one there was for the late audit itself. Their audit was late, which also led to, starting with this one here as well, noncompliant rule. So that's kind of a summation of the findings themselves. There's a lot of information in there. I encourage you to go read them, look at them, and, you know, work with the county to see what we can, what can be corrected there. So questions, comments, concerns? Again, my name is AJ. My contact information is on that final piece that you have. If you have questions, please reach out to me, but I will pause for any additional questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Thank you for the presentation, AJ. In your opinion, sorry, this is Commissioner Brown. In your opinion, do any of these findings endanger our ability to obtain future grants? And I think I'm most concerned about the federal findings.
From my experience, so I can't, I can't speak for the granting agency that's going to do it. Okay, so that's always up to however they look at things, right? They might ask some of those questions. Now, my experience will say, did you have to do a government audit clearinghouse report? That's a data collection form that I had mentioned. And again, like I said, it's late, but it's in process. I think actually Andrea might have uploaded it just within the last day or two, we got certified. So it's in process. When you look at the feds, they most likely will reach out to determine what kind of things are ongoing in relation to the corrective action plan, because you have to submit your corrective action plan as part of that. And so they work through that on their side. But that's typically what happens. So there are questions that relate to the funding and things like that.
All right, that sounds reasonably optimistic. It sounds, this is not a hugely exceptional situation.
No, I mean, I'd like to talk about, you know, my experience also is severity of findings and opinions is what matters the most to me, not volume. Of course, there's a little bit of both here, right? There's a decent amount of findings, but there's some that are more severe than others. So if you work through those, you know, you want to get those cleaned up. But normally, what happens, did you work with your granting entities to determine what that looks like? I just, you know, everything's different, we can't, we can't predict the future. But I do anticipate that you get questions from the Department of Transportation as it relates to that formula grant and work with them on what that looks like. Because they'll just want to see this, I would imagine what they'll want to see is what your corrective action plan is. Are you implementing it? How?
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other questions?
I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Edwards.
So I assume that what we're doing is the county manager and the finance department is in conversation with these entities on these correction, corrective action plans and that the idea would be to work with the entities to ensure that the corrective action plan is moving forward so that it doesn't endanger our ability on future funding. So I think the question in that, that's sort of the statement, but the question in that is, maybe to the county manager, are you confident that we are moving forward in a way that does not endanger our future ability to get these grants, federal grants particularly? And, yeah, I'll stop there for that answer, I guess.
Commissioner Edwards, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yes, I am confident that we are moving in the right direction. We are required to provide responses to each and every one of these audit findings and what our corrective action is. It goes to DFA. Other funding agencies also ask to see this. So we respond to those, identify in pretty detailed fashion what it looks like to correct these, and then they accept those as part of some of the application packages. But I don't believe that any of this is going to cause us to lose that funding. Does that answer your question?
I could infer from that that you haven't so far.
That's correct.
Okay. And I assume that in conjunction with the auditors, we have some kind of plan going forward, some sort of action plan going forward to make sure that we don't, that these issues are cleaned up and that we don't have this kind of stuff in the audit for next year?
We are all working very hard to correct these findings and correct the policies, procedures, internal controls. We are currently working on a very detailed draft policy around internal controls. Hopefully, we'll have that to you in the next month or so. What was the second part of your question? I'm sorry.
So would I be? Well, just that we have a written action plan to address these and make sure that we don't have this stuff happen going forward.
We do, but I will add that our, I would add that you are going to see some of these audit findings again next year because of the lateness of this audit. So some of these are going to carry forward. But the current auditor will see that we have already made steps to correct these. But, I mean, they were still happening in the last fiscal year because our audit wasn't complete. So we didn't know exactly what the findings were. We started working on them as soon as they were brought to our attention. But you will see some repeat findings that were just timing issues. But hopefully, by when we audit this current fiscal year, we hope to have those resolved.
Right, and so obviously, if we're moving forward on corrective action at the next audit cycle, you would be able to say, we corrected this at this point and it hasn't been happening going forward?
Yes, ma'am.
So am I correct? So am I correct in thinking that at least some of the, what has created these challenges is the lack of policies around financial controls?
That's part of it, yes.
Okay, but you're working on that, okay?
Yes, ma'am, we're working on all internal control policies. I have new staff in place, so we're making great strides in cleaning up. This is, this is not a pleasant audit at all, and so we're working very, very hard to correct all of our deficiencies.
Right. Well, I'm sure this has created an incredible amount of stress and work in the finance department and for your office as well, and so I do want to acknowledge all the hard work that has gone into turning this around, and really appreciate all of the staff that's involved in this, really appreciate all the hard work to get to this point. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. I just want to say, you know, being the chair, I've sort of sat in on the exit interviews, and I really appreciate everybody that did this. I'm happy, I know there's findings with the audit that was done, but I think with this audit, that was done, all the time it took, and, you know, all the work the staff's having to do, it's just making us better, and I'm glad that all this was caught, and now we can work on it. It is a lot of work, and we can move forward. I'm very confident in, you know, the county manager staff as to what they're doing, the action plan they have, and eventually this will be cleaned up. So I want to thank you. Thank you, guys. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, seeing none, going to next item, be a report by Gila Regional Medical Center, Mr. Robert Whitaker, CEO.
Before I begin, I do want to apologize to Ms. Kano and express that it's certainly not our expectation in terms of service and what we do, and someone should be reaching out to her today. For the month of August, let's see here, we reported eight million in patient operating revenue with operating net income of $176,000 year-to-date. We've reported 16 million in net operating revenue with a net income of $680,000. That net income is about $600,000 better than prior year. Statistical, debt on the hospital in the month of August, we saw 1,520 ER visits. Year-to-date, we're about 170 ER visits higher than we were last year for the two months ended in our fiscal year. Inpatient admissions, 82 for the month of August, and about 12 down or lower than prior year. And we delivered 20 babies in the month of August, 42 for the year, and that's 18 lower than prior year. Surgeries, we're about 18 surgeries higher than prior year for the two months. We've got about 500 for the first two months, and then our total outpatient visits are about 350 visits higher than prior year for the two months. A few of the things, I just want to report out based on the presentation before mine, that we are, we're about three-quarters finished with our cost report and financial audits and everything. I've been assured that everything will be done and submitted by the time requirements for us as a component of grant counting to the county manager. So we'll have, make sure everything's done in time and have that to you, and that was a big correction from last year for us. A few dates, our GRMC Foundation, just want to share that our GRMC Foundation is having their annual gala, October 25th, at the Murray Hotel, and certainly all the commissioners and county administration, and anyone's invited to that, starts at 4:30. There's auction, and the entertainment for the evening is a psychic reader out of Albuquerque, who's pretty popular, as I understand it. We do have our annual Christmas party coming up on Friday, the 20th, December 20th, and then another big event for us is the Halloween trunk-or-treat that happens at the facility on the 31st, from 5 to 7. I'm very appreciative of Western New Mexico University and Sora schools and Cobray schools for allowing us to partner with them and to work with them. We had a wonderful experience on the nights when we had our GRMC Friends and Family Day at the football games, and like I said, it's anything we can do to support the institutions in our community and help them out, we're grateful to do so. One of a few projects that are happening within our facility in recognition of some of the discussion that happened this morning, there have, we are in plans and have started plans to fix our ER registration area, as well as the outpatient registration area. And so we've got some preliminary drawings that have already been set up, there's, these are going to have to be permitted projects when we're moving HVAC and power and sprinkler lines, so, but those things are being looked at and in trust. We're at the end stages of wrapping up a large phone project for us, so we're changing out the entire phone system, for any of the IT folks in the room, it was an old POTS line system, and we're going to the Silver Internet Protocol system. But once we do this, we've started and getting ready to go into our telemetry, it's kind of a patient monitoring system, and replacing that throughout the entire facility. And then, when that project's finished, we've got another big project of our nurse call system of replacing that. Those three projects alone are about $2 million in what we're doing. We do have, did contract with a company to provide a building feasibility study, and that's underway, to look at our existing building, services that are provided, future services, needs of our community, and see if, what kind of course of action to take for the board and the commission in regards to that building and renovations, expansions, or something different that might happen. A service that we're kind of starting up and getting going is what's called a community paramedicine program. Our EMS is working with the state Medicaid MCOs. They provide us information on patients to visit, and then we go out and visit those Medicaid members in their homes and do kind of health checks and check-in on them in their homes through this, through this program that we have. Recently, the Legislative Health and Human Services Committee was in Silver City and were grateful to have hosted them at a dinner and present several times at their meetings. One of the things, just thought I would share, is that the New Mexico Department of Workforce Solutions did a recent report and reported that in the state of New Mexico, there are 8,800 open RN positions, nurse positions, in the state of New Mexico. For us, we have about 23, 23, 25 positions open, but it's a challenge in terms of healthcare recruitment, certainly across the state. Lastly, I just want to mention that we recently were recognized and won the New Mexico Hospital Association Quality Award. This is the highest award they give for quality for hospitals in the state, for non-urban hospitals, related to our work around sepsis and what that means. And additionally, the New Mexico has a quality metric dashboard that they track called the New Mexico Hospital Value-Based Purchasing Program, and it's tiered, and we've been in the highest tier for that program in their reporting since its inception, and so we've got a good quality team, and the work that they do, and all of our staff and members and the service they provide. That's my report, stand for questions.
Mr. Whitaker, hearing you and understanding, you know, designs, et cetera, for, you know, what we heard in public comment, I'd like to see what steps we're going to take now as Gila Regional, and I don't know if you want to report that through your chair to us, to let us know, trying to prevent what was said in public input. I do know that it's been a few years back, and of course it wasn't health tech, but when my father was there in the hospital, I had the same similar incident with, you know, I couldn't get information on my dad and his health without jumping through all these hoops because of HIPAA. But at the end of the day, sitting there visiting him in a little curtain in between the next patient, I could tell you more what was wrong with the next patient when that doctor walked in than I could tell you about my dad. So I understand things, I understand we don't have the room, we don't have, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed, but, you know, the privacy of patients are very important and should be number one priority. So if you could please let me know what steps you're going to take, or let our commission know what steps you're going to take to fixes before you get into the design plans and all that, that might take some time, because I do believe that our citizens deserve the privacy. It's hard for people to go to the hospital, or to a clinic, or to see their doctor. You know, I can imagine how much harder it's going to be sitting in a lobby, or sitting somewhere where you're surrounded by people trying to explain what's wrong with you. So if you don't mind it, and I don't, it doesn't bother me if you go through the chair and he gets this information, or through you directly to the commissioners, but I would like to see the steps that are going to be taken now to take care of this. Commissioners, any other commissioners have any questions or anything?
No.
Thank you. Well...
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Whitaker.
Okay, this is Commissioner Medina, right?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Medina.
So I just wanted to, you know, kind of just thank him, recently he's been working hard for our capital budget, that it's provided, and it's given a lot of money for directors, purchase, equipment, for education, for safety, private, and so forth, and I just want to pump that out, that the thoughtful and the sort of direction, first, really hard to get our capital funded up, and really help, it's going to really help with purchasing equipment and getting to a higher quality level. On the other hand, recently we got gave a similar order to staff, and it's allowed me to recruit, you know, my personality to the area. I've been able to fill about 75% of my vacant rooms, and I just want to thank you for that, and thank the hospital as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina, thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Okay, thank you. Moving on to our looked-at official reports. Sheriff Anueva.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I will present to you my report for the month of September. Grant County Sheriff's Office responded to a total of 1,457 calls for service in the month of September. Just to go over a few of the calls that we had, we responded to 15 alarm calls, 21 domestic disturbance calls, we investigated 18 traffic crashes, we had 46 animal complaint calls, 20 reckless driver calls, and 10 unwanted subject calls. Just to go over a little bit about the office in regard to our training, deputies attended the child passenger saving, child passenger advocate training held at the Burnley County Fire Department. I sent some staff to that so that we can start helping out our community with child safety seats. We want to start putting on clinics for them and helping the public to understand how to safely secure their child in their vehicle, and what the weight limitations are for certain car seats and stuff like that, so I wanted to really bring that back. We used to do that in the past, and I think we get a lot of questions from the public in regards to that, so we're going to start doing that. Pretty much, it's been busy for us, business as usual, had a lot going on, but I did want to go over some funding that we have received. It's in regards to the DA, funding that we received from the DA's office in regards to trying to apprehend and execute warrants throughout the county. The DA's office did award the Sheriff's Office $40,000 to try and get as many of these warrants that are backlog-served in our community, so I do have a fugitive apprehension unit that has, that is going to start working on that. I'm hoping that individuals that know they have warrants, hopefully they'll just turn themselves in before we go look for them, but we are going to kick that off here pretty soon. I did do want to recognize, special recognition to the maintenance department for helping keep our offices clean and orderly, you know, it's a big plus to have a clean office and have the public come in and see that, and I thank the maintenance for taking care of us. Also, the road department for keeping our fleet up and running, you know, we do have some units that need more special care than others, but I thank them for what they do for us as well. And obviously, I want to thank the 911 telecommunicators for dispatch, for, you know, keeping my deputies safe out there, you know, they're the lifeline to law enforcement and the public, so they do a really good job, so I want to thank them and commend them for what they do. And finally, my staff, you know, for the day-in and day-out of operation, work that they do, good work that they're providing to our community, you know, I really thank them for what they do. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our treasurer, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman Ponson, commissioners attached. You'll see the report titled Tax Maintenance Report for the total taxes collected for the month of September of this year is $45,202.46 so far for the 2023 tax rule. $13,26,540.40 has been collected, which left the county at a collection percentage of 93.5%. For the total 2023 tax rule, $904,924.61 remains uncollected. The total percentage collected for the total tenure collection as of September 30th, 2024 is 95.88%, of which a total of $118,680,335.05 of taxes were collected. That leaves a total uncollected balance of taxes of $5,094,116.65. The status of the treasurer's office, property tax auction will be held October 22nd, 2024, at the, will be held on October 22nd at the Grant County Veteran Memorial and Conference Center at 10 o'clock in the morning. Treasurer's office will be closed from 10 to noon. Also, the 2024 tax rule was submitted from the Grant County Assessor's Office and successfully accepted in the treasurer's office. I want to personally thank Assessor Misty Trujillo and Chief Deputy Assessor Raul Turieta on working together and making this process successful. on working together and making this process successful. It takes lots of pieces, lots of communication, teamwork. We do have to work tremendously on working with state offices, like the Public Education Department, DFA, on getting certain reports over. Sometimes they send it to me. Sometimes they send it to Misty. So working together, making sure we have all pieces of the puzzle together works. So I'm glad I can work together with them on making this successful. I also want to just bring it up to you and the public regarding mutilated currency. I did do a memo to the county officials regarding mutilated currency. I'm a little annoyed by this as we, in the treasurer's office, we did accept a mutilated bill. This was all that the owner could pay, so I accepted it, knowing that the whole bill was there. You could read the serial numbers, et cetera. When I took it to the bank, they didn't want to accept it. I argued and said, the whole bill is there. It's readable. There's nothing missing from the bill. They ended up taking it as a courtesy. They did say in the future, if I did collect mutilated currency, that I would have to call the Federal Reserve Board and get that negotiated with them for the county to get credit. So I did do a memo, and I did urge our county departments to watch what they collect. I'm a little bit irritated because this is not fair to our county citizens, as sometimes this is all they have. And I am going to be pushing this over to the state treasurer's office. I will be contacting the Congress and Senator Heinrich's office and representative on trying to see what the Federal Reserve is doing. Before, when I've been a banker for 17 years, this was never an issue. As long as the whole bill was there, the bank would get credit for it. But I guess a lot has happened since I've been out of the line of scope line of work for the past three and a half years. So I'll be working on this, on just trying to get that resolved to find a common. If I could, I don't know where I'll get, but it's just a little frustrating, and that's where I'll leave it. But hopefully, I can get a report to you in the future to see how we can get this resolved. I want to also personally, I want to thank my staff for all their hard work. As we get into this busy tax season, it's going to get busy. And I look forward to seeing all my constituents and and visiting with them. And I open for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Yes, I sure do have a report. And Patrick, thank you very much. You took the words out of my mouth about doing doing the rollover for the tax bills and the the tax rule rollover. It's a very extensive time, who we have to get off the system. It takes report after report after report. And I just want to say Misty has done a phenomenal job, and working in unison has been making it a lot easier. So thank you very much, Patrick, for that. One other thing that I would like to say, and I do want to thank IT because of we are still conducting the reappraisals for for the county, and we're still in Baird. And by putting it on the website has really eased up the blow of people calling in on what we're doing out there. And also, we're also going to be working on commercial properties. We started off at Moore Subdivision, and I relate that information to to Adam. And I do believe Scott said a few words about you this morning, also about the emergency management and so on. So thank you. Thank you very much. Once we roll over the assessment rolls, it takes a long, it takes quite a while because we have to do the yield control formula. We actually also have to do the TIF, all the other House Bill 33, Save Bill 9, whatever the case may be. But this will this will start working on our rendition period coming in November, okay? November is when we actually have to send out all kinds of information for you to render your personal property. So that's very, very intense. And once again, I know Patrick's going to be very, very busy during the tax bill time. I'll be attending the Assessor's Affiliate up in Albuquerque on the 28th and 29th of October. And it's a very intense meeting due to the fact that we're going to be talking about disclosure, equitable disclosure. And it's going to be very important because we have been working on this for the last 40 years since I've been there about getting equitable disclosure on the commercial side, and it's on the non-residential. We do have the residential disclosure at this time, and hopefully, that we can actually get that situated and hopefully pass. Right now, voting time. I am so glad that that working with the county clerk's office, it is amazing what the information that you guys have actually thrown out there about the amendments. And thank you very much, Sir Khan, it was a very, very good job, and also Marissa. I would like to just bring up that the Constitution Amendment Number 1, proposing the amendment of Article 815 of the Constitution of New Mexico, extending the property tax exemption currently to allow the 100% disabled. And we have we have been honoring that with 100% disabled. And with that first constitution, you can vote against, for, or against, against. That's one of the 100% disabled that the windows of widows and widows basing of the amount of the 100% disabled. You have to send the information. We do have the applications. We're still, we're doing it currently for the veterans, but this would really help out on the widows. It does, it does do an adjustment on our assessments. And if anybody wants more little bit detail, you can contact us there in the Assessor's Office, and we can give you a complete breakdown of what goes on with this 100% disabled. The other one is actually Amendment Constitution Number Number 2. And in 2023, the legislature passed Constitution Amendment Number 2. They approved the voters that with approval of the voters would amend Article 85 of the Constitution of New Mexico of increasing property tax exemptions for honorable veterans and their discharge. Back in the day, you actually had to be pretty much reside in the state of New Mexico, and you had to be in any conflict and so on. This means for all honorable discharged veterans. That would be allowed not only the veterans, but also the spouse of 4,000, adjusting it to 10,000 off your taxable salary. This discussion of the constitutional amendment Number 1 is it is a loss of revenue due to the property tax exemptions and automatically increases property taxes that are those that are not non-veterans. While the budgets of local governments will bear most of the loss of the revenue, at least 40% will be absorbed by the automatic property tax increase, approximately $34. So that's going to be also on the ballot. So I stand for any questions at this moment because I have been getting a lot of phone calls about about that portion of the 100% disabled and also increasing from 4,000 to 10,000.
Any questions, Commissioner?
One other one is the Senate Joint Resolution Number 16. It's the Constitutional Amendment of County Commission to Determine County Elected County Official Salaries. The New Mexico County supports the legislation of mending the Article 10, Section 1, New Mexico State Constitution to authorize in the Board of County Commissioners rather than the legislatures for the annual salaries of county officials. Clarifies the fee collected by the officials due to pay for the county treasury, and that's actually going to be on the ballot. Historically, the counties have actually requested legislation to raise county elected official salaries occurred every three years to four years from 1994, 1998, 2002, 2006, 2009, and 2013, and 2018. That has been going on through House Bill 410, House Bill 219, Senate House Bill 69 throughout the years of 2020. The county official salaries capped as statute of Chapter 4 and Article 44. Only county officials are kept by statute, not the municipalities. Approximately 1/3 of the 33 counties are then they're actually kept. The commission already determined whether the provided increase, and it is through budgetary limitation. 27 county assessors, clerks, sheriffs, treasurers, chief deputies make more than their respective elected official, 40 K-plus in this case. It is a nonpartisan bill, and it is on the ballot. So please, once again, the county clerk has these wonderful documents that gives you a breakdown on all the obligations and all the deal on the Constitution and so on. So I do stand for any questions. And once again, thank you very much for making a very peaceful rollover on our tax on our tax rules. It makes our lives a lot easier, so thank you very much. The rates haven't been pretty much has stayed the same after discussing it with Patrick Khan, our county treasurer. And we will be putting the rates on the on the website. So if you have any questions about what your taxes are going to be estimated for this next time around, so it makes it a lot easier. I stand for any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Nothing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, and all the additions.
Deputy Madam Clerk, do you have a report? Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So I was second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to new business, consideration of Horizon Tower application, 60 Red Cliff Road, Mimbres, New Mexico.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, I did have a quick question. This is Commissioner Brown.
Okay, go ahead.
I got, I think we all received email about this matter from our county manager who made reference to the public having addressed the complaints of one of the residents out there. And I'm just curious, how those people address those complaints?
Commissioner Brown, I can't speak for Mr. Williamson. He did reports in his presentation to the commission on Tuesday and notified us that he had conversation with the landowner and explained to her how to identify what the location of the tower was.
All right. Thanks. No more questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the next item is consideration of approval for the Corre Caminos budget for fiscal year 2025 through 2026.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve as presented.
I'll second. Okay, so Commissioner Billings made a motion, I second the motion. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to agreements, consideration of agreement 8-24-40.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Local Driving While Intoxicated Program grant agreement as presented.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Moving on to consideration of agreement 8-24-4, GPS efficiency monitoring agreement with Wagner Equipment Company.
Move to approve as presented, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye, motion carries. Next item is consideration of agreement 8-24-42. It's a lease contract with Sourcewell Members through Enterprise for Fleet Vehicle Replacement Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Are you good with this, Sheriff? Are you good with this, county manager? Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Medina?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item J, consideration of agreement 8-24-43. It's a purchase agreement with Silver Consolidated Schools for the Cliff Baseball Field at approximately 6.730 acres.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase of in this agreement with the Silver Consolidated Schools at the Cliff Baseball Field.
I'll second. So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by myself. Any discussion? Just the only thing I have is thank you, county manager and staff for pursuing this. I think it's a good thing for our kids in Cliff. I appreciate it, so thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, moving on to item K, consideration of agreement 8-24-44, purchase of .1757 acre parcel from estate of Mr. Loris Flores. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I have a second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay, moving on to item L, consideration of agreement 8-24-45, intergovernmental agreement with six judicial district court for improvements in the Grant County courthouse.
Move to approve.
I'll go ahead and second. Okay, under discussion, Commissioners, do you have any discussion?
This is approving a design study, is it? Am I remembering this correctly?
Mr. Holigan?
Commissioner Brown, this would be to get us to 50% design development. So it's not full construction drawings, but this will get us to the point where we have enough detail to get us very accurate estimates if we choose to move forward with with construction.
And is for both options?
Yes, sir, that's correct. This would be for for us to evaluate safety and accessibility considerations to the existing courthouse and also the consideration of a new construction or construction of a new judicial campus.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Moving on to resolution, consideration of resolution R-24-50, authorizing the acceptance of grant offer from New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration for appropriation number 24ZI5042-06, amount of $525,000 for corrections recruitment.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve this resolution.
I'll second. So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by myself. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item N, consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash fifty-one, resolution to extend termination date for L one zero zero five seven eight, cap twenty twenty-four. Okay, I'll say. Commissioner Medina, did you second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item O, consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash fifty-two, resolution to extend termination date for L one zero zero five five four, SP twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on, item P, consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash five-three, a resolution to accept the fiscal year 2023 audit findings.
I think I'm watching approved. I'll second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, moving to item Q, consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash fifty-four, budget adjustment request.
Move to approve.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item R, consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash five fifty-five, resolution to certify fixed assets for fiscal year twenty-four.
Move to approve.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Brown, do you have a report?
No, I do not, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Medina, do you have a report?
I have nothing, but thank you.
Commissioner Billings, do you have a report?
I want to thank the county staff for the cleanup work that you've been doing, Andrea and Mr. Placencio Charlene on the budget findings. And we're going to review that as was suggested by the auditor, and I have a lot of questions probably, but I appreciate the work that was done there. It's good to have you onboard, Mr. Placencio. And I wasn't, oh, he's gone, so never mind. Just going to ask for an introduction for Mr. Holgin, but I'll go, I'll go meet him because I wasn't here at Tuesday's meeting, so that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I have no report at this time, so Commissioners, do you have anything else? Okay, seeing nothing, meeting adjourned, thank you all.